Good evening, and welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Monday, August 22, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. here in McKinnon Council Chambers. Relative to Mass. General I, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. First Agenda Item Number One, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call.
Councillor Adams.
Present.
Councillor Daniel.
Present.
Councillor Dow.
Present.
Councillor Lazo.
Present.
Councillor Marquetti.
Present.
Councillor Montigny.
Present.
Councillor Rivas.
Present.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Councillor Steve.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. Agenda Item Number Three, Consider an Accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, July 11, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Councillor Steves.
Just a spelling correction. Almost every councillor should be C-I-L-O-R. We're not attorneys.
Follow the spelling.
They're all S-E-L-O-R.
All right, okay. Councillor Rivas.
Just another spelling error on Mr. Chenier's last name. It was misspelled.
How would you like that corrected?
I don't know exactly how to spell C.
C-A-T-N-I-E-R.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed?
I wasn't here abstaining.
You're abstaining? Okay, we have one abst- eight, zero, one. One abstention. Item Number Four, Consider an Accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, August 8, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? Councillor Steves.
Mostly spellings again. One under Item Number Six, the last paragraph, Tetreault, and he's actually from Southbridge, but he's building commissioner in Webster. Under Number Eight, Clemence, Denise Clemence's last name is misspelled. It should be C-L-E-M-E-N-C-E. There's a couple of references there. And again, Chenier is also misspelled.
Very good. Councillor Rivas.
In the section where it says, "Update on Construction of Animal Kennel," there was just some of the responses were missing in that section, and I just wondered if we can get them in there.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Councillor Adams.
Motion to suspend the rules to add the reorganization meeting of July 11.
Very good. We have a motion to add the organizational minutes.
We just did it.
No, you didn't.
No, we didn't.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second to add the reorganizational meeting minutes.
motion move.
It's a separate meeting. It's not listed on the agenda, and it's a separate meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules to add Agenda Item 4A? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Very good. Agenda Item 4A, Consider an Accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, July 11, 2022, the reorganizational meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
I think my corrections then for the way that I stated earlier actually should be for that one because I was looking at those minutes.
Very good. Anyone else? Councillor Marquetti.
Do we have a cop- do we have a copy of the- oh, never mind. I can see it. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? No? Unanimous of all present?
Mr. Chair.
Councillor Adams.
He'd be abstaining. He wasn't here.
He doesn't have to abstain.
Very good. Item Number Five, Subcommittee Reports.
You don't have to.
Item A, General Government. Councillor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last time. Most of it was focused on the wetlands bylaw, which we will be bringing back up on the, where'd it go? 30th? On the 30th for final approval. We discussed a few issues, a few changes with Eric and other people in the audience, and it was well attended. And as to the next meeting, we have a couple of items that are on our agenda, and the next one is the 30th at 6:30.
Very good. Thank you. Item B, Department of Public Works. Councillor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. DPW Subcommittee held a meeting last Thursday, August 16 at 6:00 p.m. In attendance were myself, Councillor Steves, Councillor Dow, Citizen Member Steve, Lazo, and Kevin Splain. We had two agenda items. Number One, Citizens' Forum. There were questions from Mr. Splain regarding several road issues in town. And Agenda Item Number Two, Discuss and Vote to Transfer Money from the Sale of the Wells School Building in the amount of $1,277,500 to Road Paving Construction and Reconstruction Fund. That agenda was postponed to the next DPW Subcommittee, which is scheduled for August 30, 2022, following Gen Gov. Councillor Steves and myself have had a discussion about having a joint general government DPW Subcommittee to discuss creating a road construction bylaw. Many of you have seen some of the work various contractors have been doing around town on trenches, trenches, so we'd like to discuss doing something about that. So our next meeting is August 30, 2022. Meeting adjourned at 7:00 p.m. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item C, Education and Human Services. Councillor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. We have a number of items on tonight's agenda, including Items 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 25, 26, 27, and 29, all of which were discussed at our meeting last week. We have no posted meeting. I will give recommendations about the items.
Very good. Thank you. Item D, Planning and Development. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. We had no meetings since our last Town Council meeting. We have actually just one scheduled for the 6th of September. Thank you.
Very good. Item E, Protection of Persons and Property. Councillor Lazo.
We had a meeting, and we have Agenda Items Number 10 and 11 as recommendations.
Very good. Thank you. Item Number Six, Chairman's Announcements. I have one announcement. Early voting will begin this Saturday at Town Hall. That's this Saturday at Town Hall. The early voting schedule is as follows. Saturday, August 27, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's also the last day to register to vote, so the office will reopen until 5:00 p.m. Monday, August 29, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 30, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Wednesday, August 31, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thursday, September 1, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Friday, September 2, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The state primary will be held on Tuesday, September 6, 2022. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the community center. Thank you. That's all I have. Item Number Seven, Town Manager's Announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, residents. Just a couple quick items. Yesterday, a couple of councillors reached out to me about a street opening on Charlton Street. We were able to get that marked yesterday afternoon through the help of DPW, and they will be addressing the new drainlayer in town who apparently did some of the work late on Friday, so there was nobody available to see that they had left the hole open. It's my understanding they should have plated it. That will be corrected. When we spoke at DPW last week, there was a question about the stabs of Town Hall carpets. I want to let people know that they have been ordered, and they are in back order part of supply chain issues. They're scheduled to be here for Town Hall in the last week of September, and I'm told that the contractor will come in on a Friday afternoon to work over the weekend to rip up carpets and begin installation so as not to interfere with our operations. Couple of announcements I have from our Board of Health regarding a mattress ban that's coming up in the fall. I alluded to it earlier this year. There is a pending mattress ban. They'll no longer be accepted curbside. This is a statewide initiative by Mass. DEP to eliminate mattresses, box springs, and certain textiles from disposal in Massachusetts. What that means to Southbridge residents is after November 1, you can no longer put them out at curbside. Casella has offered to pick them up curbside, but you'll have to pre-register with Casella, and there'll be a cost of $35 per item, be it a box spring or a mattress. However, they must be placed in a plastic mattress disposal bag, which you can purchase at major most box stores such as Home Depot, Lowe's, or Walmart. After November 1, also residents will have the option of bringing the mattresses to Oxford for the same day as quarterly household waste for a fee of $25. On October 1 of this year, the Southbridge Health Department is hosting a drop-off day for all Southbridge residents at the DPW complex on 85 Gulfwood Road from 8 to 12. Items will include mattresses and box springs. There'll be a $20 fee for those. Electronics and car tires. Electronics will be priced per pound. Car tires are $3 each. Each mattress, again, or box spring must be placed in one of those plastic disposal bags. I also did let the council know there's been a couple of pieces of legislation that were passed recently, including legislation that may impact our host community agreements with regard to retail marijuana in the town. The NMA is still evaluating. I'm watching a webinar right now on the impacts of some of the recent end-of fiscal year legislation that was passed. I also reported to the council that Mass. DEP has sent a letter to the Southbridge Waste Disposal, otherwise known as Casella, asking them to reinstitute residential well monitoring up and around the landfill area. This week, I'll be meeting with our sewer, as well as our DPW departments, to go over the sewer IMA. That's coming to an end of its term with Sturbridge. They are looking to renew, but as I indicated before, unlike the previous 20-plus-year contract, they're looking for a shorter term, so we're going to evaluate their proposal this week and then get back to them. We're also working, DPW interim director, Mr. DeJardin, and I are continuing to work with VHB on the back and forth with regard to Lynch's corrections to the Main Street paving, so I'll update you. Hopefully, I'll have a better update at the next meeting. This evening, as you know, we have plenty of volunteers that are going to come forward, and it's great to see. We post on our website the vacancies under the boards and committees. You can find them. We're always looking for great volunteers, and we have quite a few volunteers this evening, and I thank everybody who's put their name up to serve for the town of Southbridge. Also, on our human resources page, we have links to some of the many vacancies. We currently have 17 open positions, primarily full-time, a couple of part-time positions. These are the number of positions we have open despite the fact that we've just recently filled five, so we're looking for folks. So if you're interested in working for the town of Southbridge or volunteering for the town of Southbridge, please check out our website, and that is all I have for the moment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Item Number Eight, A Presentation, Month Two Progressary Update from Capital Associates by Mr. Mark Karen.
Good evening. You know, I always thought myself as a person with very few words, hard to hold a conversation, and so on, but I got a number of calls today from some friends. They said, "You're speaking tonight," and I said, "Yes, I am." And they said, "Well, if you want to keep the same number of friends, keep it to the seven minutes. You've been allotted. No more." So I do wish to keep those friends, and actually, I'm as excited as I think the rest of the crowd here to get past my agenda item and get on to some of those other festivities and celebrations. So the, it's just a quick slide. Under the areas which I am being measured on, the most tangible one, obviously, and I think the one of most interest to everybody is the storefronts, the number of vacancies, the number, well, the number of storefronts, one, the number of vacancies, and then who is occupying them now, and where we would wish to see some change. I'm happy to report, these are since the start numbers, the base numbers, take the date of 6/22 and to today, we're happy to report that the number of vacant storefronts on the 22nd of June was 58. As of today, I mean, filled. I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought I was doing vacancies, but we're actually doing fills. We've actually filled three storefronts. Some of that comes from a void that happened during COVID. One is a new fill, and it's actually in the same building block. Starlight reopens and take up two storefronts, and that's good. That wasn't necessarily always a given. There was a little bit of an effort, actually quite a bit of effort, the department and the town came, and along with some concessions from the landlord. Also, in that same building is now a real estate class school. Place Realty is there, so there is now a new educational offering for those seeking to enter into the real estate market. Probably not a bad time if they hurry up, so that I'm happy to report that. But in with that, I mean, three storefronts doesn't sound like a lot, but the conversations that are ongoing right now are substantial, and I'm happy to report that, but it's too early to report prospective successes. But I would let you know that another storefront on Main Street, on Hamilton Street, is scheduled to open up in October. The name of the company is, or the name of the business is Extreme, and they deal in signature sneakers. I won't be buying one, but I guess there's a market for them, and we hope him all the success in the world, along with some very active talks on a couple of fronts on Main Street. One is a restaurateur, and there has been interest in taking advantage of the resources that you have given our office so that we can get people over some small hurdles in occupancy. But again, it's too early. There is an agreement between the property owner and that prospective restaurant operator, so these numbers will continue to increase to the betterment in the not-too-distant future. Central Street also has got a number of pieces actively being worked on with myself in with the negotiations or moderations, if you will, to get them to a go, and I'm anxious to report those to you. The number of social services and churches in the downtown has decreased by one, which is a healthy sign, one that we have all agreed that is a sign of trending in the right direction and some added health to the town. It was the church on, it's actually a Main Street address, but right on the corner of Hamilton and Main, and it's actually now occupying a church. So they were, we were able to find, again, the church on Main Street, and the property owner, Gabriel McCarthy, had found ways to accommodate them, and they're thrilled, quite frankly, thrilled. And I think we are too. And then there's, when I reported earlier, we, in walking into some of the desires that were laid out in the Rapid Recovery Plan, was, you know, to start thinking about and planning for activities that go through the downtown. I am happy to report, although it's too early to give details, but there is interest in a fairly large event. Arguably, it's 12 months in the planning, so at some point next year, but with a business in town. And again, and when the details start to come into clearer focus, I will bring that to you. It will take some planning. I did reach out to the police chief. He understands what we're looking to do, is not averse to it, but I think, you know, we all understand now that the days of lent resources in that area are gone, and rightfully so, and they'll have to be paid for. So that'll be part of the planning and part of that discussion, but when that comes to clear, I will bring it to you. The other area is improved marketing of the town to the community and the outside community. You know, we have an inside image. I think we can all attest to that. Sometimes we, even personally, we feel good about ourselves and sometimes have great feelings, and other times, probably not so much, but we're also trying to present the best face, again, from the town aspect to our outside and to individuals. I'm happy that, and the town manager was also present, we were able to kind of let in on the secrets of what we are efforting here in town with the Worcester Chamber CEO, Tim Murray, and a couple of his colleagues, along with some of the property owners who hold stake in the downtown. With that, was also subsequent meetings with a couple of stakeholders and property representatives that had not had conversations with us in the past, or in the recent past, that I am very excited about. They've got a, although it's, you know, I'm always hesitant in the area of institutional investors, especially in the real estate market, because you wonder what their, you know, the community involvement might be, but I'm happy to get a sense, a real sense, that they invest in certain areas for a reason, and they want to make a positive impact. So when that starts to come into further clarity, I'll make a more extensive report, but somebody's, I'm sure people are looking at their watches already. And then a shift in public perception. We've got a number of issues that we own. I think we've all heard, but the education department, through the receiver, was happy to have some discussions with a number of community people, along with myself, and discuss where we go from there, and I think we've got some, some of the things that we'll start reporting. Again, from the last, my last review or overview with you, was one of the other tools we're looking to use is to find the talents of a writer so that we can put out some of the best stories of individuals who come through the town of Southbridge, and just looking for that to kind of show its face, and we'll continue to work on that end. But there's a lot of conversation going on. I guess I would, as an analogy, there's a pan on the stove. There are a lot of kernels in the pot, and we're waiting for the heat to get to a temperature where things start to pop. All the kernels that were, and all the ideas and all the conversations we're having aren't going to produce full and edible kernels, but there's going to be a lot of them. I'm actually really excited, and I'm sure in the next few weeks to a month, you will also, and we'll all be engaged in certain aspects that makes this whole thing kind of button it up, and so that we're recognizing cutting ribbons and probably walking down Main Street or one of the other streets that make up our downtown core, and, well, I don't need it, but I will anyway, partake in some of the offerings. So I think that's my seven minutes. I think I still have friends? Nope. Don't say that. I'll just keep going. But I'm happy to report that, and ready to field any questions you might have for the time.
Councillor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. In addition to trying to find businesses to come to town, have you had a chance to talk to the businesses that we do have here and ask them what their needs are and how we can help them retain employees?
One of the restaurateurs, if I heard you correctly, councillor, one of the restaurateurs that's looking in is from a neighboring town. Has seen an opportunity. Is very excited, I shouldn't say excited, but it was lured here, the fact that the town has actually taken an active part in making sure that businesses succeed. So that answers yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's to your credit, all of yours, not just you.
Well, just as a follow-up.
Sure.
When you report to us, could you just come in and say, "I talked to," just as an example, "I talked to United Lands. I talked to Hides. I talked to this company. I talked to that company." Just interested in what we can do to make sure that they're thriving and they're keeping employees here, because we don't want to lose employees either. So, thank you.
Okay, and I did mishear you, councillor, but you're absolutely correct. Some of those conversations are done in a more informal manner. They are rooted in, they have representatives that go to the Southbridge Business Partnership, which is wonderful for conversation. A number of the councillors participate in that. Those conversations have taken place there, but they could be more extensive. You're correct. And I think if we are looking at what do our employees want, and some of the manufacturers are there, some of them are there because they have other aspirations, and I think we would all be, we'd all benefit if that, if we helped them get there.
I think Peck's going to turn.
Yeah, so specific to companies like AO, Dexter Russell, Hyde Tool, et cetera, let's think about their location. So if you look the map up here, he is charged with the Redevelopment Authority's urban renewal area, which is the downtown, and as creative as a lot of Mark's ideas are, we keep having to rein him in a little bit and make sure impact is downtown first and foremost. And so as he starts to see impact in the downtown and grows our charge right now, then we'll see where we can take it.
And just to finish up on that thought, the presentation, I think councillor Adams and councillor Rivas was at the Southbridge Business Partnership when they had asked for me to make a presentation to them, and it really was asking them, even though they reside outside the target area, but there is an adoption, I am suggesting, that all our businesses take because it is our downtown. There's representation and a showcasing of both manufacturing, educational opportunities, and products that are actually made, and right here. There are a couple of high, it's kind of large, big idea conversations that are going on right now, but again, it's just a little too early to bring it up, and I don't want to put anybody, I don't want anybody to feel like they've disappointed a town when conversations haven't gotten to a point where they have matured to a level where details are actually ready to start to bring forward. Again, those conversations, I want them to be free to speak until the right time is so that we can be now given permission to promote. Those are soon to come. Those are soon to come.
Anyone else? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Item Nine, Citizens' Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to approach the podium to speak on an issue not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, let's move on to item number 10. Vote to confirm the town manager's recommendation of Gary Peck to become the next lieutenant for the fire department effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Lazo.
I take great pleasure in announcing from the Subcommittee for a full confirmation of Gary Peck to the position of lieutenant. I would also like to add, after reading his resume, he's overly qualified. Thank you.
Chief.
Good evening, everybody. Councillors, Town Manager. A small part of the Peck family. There are many more, but thank you, family, for coming here tonight, and obviously, we have a good bunch of our members from the Fire Department, active and called Department, so thank you very much. Obviously, this has been a grueling task over the last several months for us to get through the promotional process that we put together here with, obviously, with the town manager and myself, with the final recommendations. I just want to talk a little bit about Gary. Most of you know Gary. Gary's been around town forever. He's been on the Fire Department for 27 years. Before he got on the Fire Department, he served, he was a member of the Army. He was a leader platoon in the military. So he was a leader there, so that was, you know, 20, maybe 30 years ago. As he's worked within the Fire Department, he became a full-time member. He became an ex-officer. If you recall what the ex-officers are, they serve in a role. If the immediate officer that is on duty is not available, the ex fills into those positions. I've seen Gary work as an ex-officer, leading the charge at fires and at medical calls. He's also a paramedic. I don't want to speak too much because Mr. Karen took all my thunder. I think you know where I'm going with this. I really, you know, obviously, with your approval tonight, I think Gary is going to be our next lieutenant, and I really wish him well, and we have a few things that we'd like to do after you, if you're going to go down that road. So thank you.
Very good. Councillor? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to wish Gary all the best. I really appreciate you stepping up and doing the right thing for the community and constantly doing the right thing, and thank you for your service to our community and your families as well. Thank you.
Councillor Rivas.
Yes, I just want to congratulate you and say that I've known Gary since we were in high school, and not only, you know, the duties that he's done as a firefighter and an EMT, but being in the community. There's so many different events that I would go to, and Gary would be there every single time, and just giving that added service to the community is immeasurable because our students really look up to our firefighters and our police, and having you out there in the community has been amazing. So thank you. you.
Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Before the meeting started, I asked Gary, which was more, which was better for you, being appointed as lieutenant or running a kickoff back for the Southbridge High School? He didn't even hesitate, it was running the kickoff back for, for the touchdown. So congratulations, welcome.
Counsel Lazo.
Just a quick comment, Gary, we, we know each other for many years, I'd just like to say that we're proud of you, and you are a Southbridge guy, and you always will be. Thank you.
Counsel Muntzigny.
Thank you, just wanted to say, congratulations, Gary. You're a great firefighter, a better person from an excellent family in town, I'm happy you're sticking with us. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Congratulations.
I know Gary likes the microphone, so I'll give him less, less than 30 seconds to do what he likes. It's probably one time I don't want to talk.
Mark, can you give him a lesson?
I just, it really comes from your heart, I thank you. I've been here forever, like everybody says. I really love this town, so thank you.
No, thank you.
So at this time, we'd like to have Captain Jeffrey Matthew pin Gary with his new lieutenant's badge. I can say that these two guys came on the call department together 27 years ago, so they've been through thick and thin and help, help each other out, and I'm sure this, this relationship, or all of our relationships with all the guys in the back, will, will continue to lead, help lead Gary through this transition. I don't need to announce the next person on the microphone either.
Do Gary J. Peck solemn swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a lieutenant for the Southbridge Fire Department faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the Charter and bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help you God. I just need you to sign right there. I have to give you the open, meanwhile, in the conflict of interest, so if you would just sign right there. Where is yours?
Vote to confirm the appointment of George Shinya to the Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through June 31, 2023. State ethics in good standing.
So move.
Second. Counsel Lazo.
Just a clarification, Mr. Shinya has already done the ethics, the state ethics, so he's in good standing as he takes the position. George Shinya, a former firefighter, former counselor, the Subcommittee confirmed him unanimously to push forward for confirmation.
Very good, any discussion? Would you like to speak?
George Shinya, 23, Teresa Ave, Southbridge here. I just want to thank the council and the Subcommittee for giving me, and hopefully giving me the opportunity to continue serving for the town. I've done this my whole life, and I look forward to serving. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank George for stepping up and all the volunteers this evening, so thank you.
Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Mark Hattie.
Do you think maybe, maybe we should just hold off until the room is cleared?
Five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Mr. Manager, you'd like to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I forgot two other minor notes from my, my announcements. Last week, we had our first ever employee appreciation luncheon, it went very well, we had a lot of employees out there from the various departments, we had counselors come by and other folks, so it was a success by all accounts. But I also wanted to call your attention this evening, you've noticed a gentleman walking around in the back of the room, his name is Rich Gardett. After the last meeting, I reached out to the cable folks, and I met with Jim Cosgrove and his staff, and we were out checking the sound in here, and they fine tuned it during the week, and Rich is here just in case, but you should notice a distinct difference in the quality of the sound in the back, so that the audience should be able to hear themselves this week, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the cable staff and Mr. Gardett for working on that this week.
Great, thank you very much. Let's move on, please, to item number 12. Vote to confirm the appointment of Ariel Ortiz to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2023, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee, as we have a lot of appointments tonight, this appointment's actually here, so if I would defer, after the manager gives his comments, I would love to have the candidate speak before the committee.
Very good. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Subcommittee Chair. This will go for all the candidates that are coming up this evening. We get applications from time to time, and I try and make a point whenever possible to reach out to some of them. Some of the folks here, I was able to speak, some of them, we had five-minute conversations, some of them, we had 45-minute conversations. I usually reach out to gauge their interest and thank them for volunteering. Some I met in person, but each one of them that put their name and application in, I thanked them, as we've said earlier this evening, without people volunteering, you know, we can't get a lot of things accomplished, you're part of the backbone of the public process. You know, we have elected officials, we have people that work here, but we need the volunteers that sit on these boards and committees to move the town forward in a positive direction. And again, I want to thank Ms. Ortiz and everybody else that's coming up this evening for dedicating their time and volunteering to the Town of Southbridge, and I can't say that I met anyone that I didn't want to put on. In some instances, we had more applications for several of the positions than we had openings, which unfortunately, we had to only pick a handful, but I, again, I thank some of those people, and some of them were able to put their name in elsewhere, so thank you very much, everybody who's applied this evening, and I wish you all well. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Ortiz, would you like to approach?
Just wanted to say, thank you for the opportunity.
Very good, any discussion? Hearing none, all, I'm sorry, Counsel Lazo.
I'd just like to comment, it's nice to see some young fellows, young ladies, coming up and volunteering, because those dinosaurs are now going extinct, so we need to do feed from the, from the youth. Thank you.
Very good, anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 13. Vote to confirm the appointment of Gil Provost to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2023, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So move.
Second. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Provost was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee, and as earlier, I'd like to have him speak after the manager gives his comments and recommendations. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Manager. Just want to say I'm proud to serve my town.
This is a counselor, a counselor, this is not for, this is a Subcommittee position, I don't know that I, this is. Yeah. No, I, as I indicated earlier, I appreciate everybody putting their name in. This, I believe, is though a, an appointment by the council more so than the manager, so I, but I, again, I appreciate Mr. Provost coming in and volunteering his time to serve on the Subcommittee, because they too are an important part of the process.
Thank you, town manager. Thank you very much, any discussion? Counsel Lazo.
I knew Gil's parents, mom and dad, worked for the Town of Southbridge, volunteered for the Town of Southbridge, and as you see, it's in the bloodline to constantly give back to the community. Thank you.
Very good, anything else? Thank you, Counsel Lazo. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Congratulations. Thank you, thank you very much. Item number 14. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Paige Zugda to the Southbridge Board of Health for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So move.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee. I will say for myself, I was quite impressed with her healthcare background, and I think that's an important asset to have while being on the Board of Health, and I think she'll provide a valuable perspective if confirmed tonight.
Very good. Mr. Manager.
These next two appointments, Ms. Zugda as well as Ms. Quinones, I think are very important because of the Board of Health and the power that they have over the health and safety of the residents of Southbridge, and many of our patrons that come to our restaurants and other facilities here in town. I did work with Ms. Duffy, who's here this evening, from the Board of Health, and I see Mr. Grabowski who's here as well. I did talk to them along the way about these appointments. This was one of the appointments where we had more applicants than we had vacancies, and we had a lot of good people put their name in. But the rationale that I had here was, we, I felt we needed, especially in these times, to have people with a medical background. Ms. Zugda comes with a long history of working in nursing, and Ms. Quinones, when she gets up later, can talk about her history, but she comes from a history of having worked in rehab and a long career in working in the mental health field, which is a very important component of what we deal with here every day in the Town of Southbridge. So these next two appointments that are up are both for Board of Health and are key, and I thank the input that I received from the Board of Health members that are here this evening, along the way, and everybody who put their name in.
Very good, discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 15. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Jasmine Quinones to the Southbridge Board of Health for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee. I was quite impressed personally with her social services background, I think that's a really important aspect to the Board of Health that I don't think people consider often, is how important our social safety net is for supporting some of our most disadvantaged. So I'll let the manager speak on this, and I believe Ms. Quinones is here tonight, if she would like to speak after, I would request that she could.
Mr. Manager.
Again, Ms. Quinones is one of those individuals, I had a great conversation with her, she came recommended, she put her application in, I spoke to several people about, who gave glowing recommendations of her work. She works here in town at the Kiva Center, and I think she'd be a welcome addition to the Board of Health.
Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to be here tonight, I'm very excited to be on the board, and I look forward to doing many changes with our community, so thank you.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Lazo.
I'd just like to say that these are two impressive candidates, the Board of Health and now a full complement, and I'm excited, hopefully, moving forward with the Director of Health or whatever the position will be at the time, we'll work hand in hand with the council. Thank you.
Very good, anyone else? Counsel Rivas.
I just want to say that I've worked extensively with Ms. Quinones in the community, and I think her expertise has been sorely needed in this area, and, you know, thank you to Ms. Duffy for, for recommending her and, and, you know, having her come forward for this position, because I think that she's going to contribute a great deal to a lot of things that haven't been discussed before, so thank you for stepping up.
Very good, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 16. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Lisa Tarantino to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Tarantino, she has a background in special education and was interested in giving her time back on this particular committee, and I would recommend.
Very good, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 17. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Kevin Buxton to the Southbridge Trail Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So move.
Second. Counsel Ryan.
This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee, Mr. Chair.
Very good, any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Buxton is here.
Mr. Buxton, you wish to approach?
Just like to say thank you for your consideration.
Very good, unanimous of all present? Item number 18. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Joel Rhine to the Southbridge Trail Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So move.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 19. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Amy Ulet to the Southbridge Trail Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So move.
Second. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is the third appointment to the Trails Committee tonight, we'll finally have, I think, a full complement of people on there. All the applicants tonight, I'm so thankful for them approaching and being interested in doing something like this and giving back positively to our community. As somebody who enjoys the trails, I'm really excited to see more work being done on them and seeing how it might tie in with the rail trail project here in town, so I'm super excited. I thank all the volunteers, and it was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Very good, any discussion? Counsel Lazo.
Just a quick comment on the rail trail, I know that there were a lot of people that have been involved, I know Mr. Buxton has been there forever, but it's nice to see everybody coming forward, but more importantly, how the town is moving forward on the trail, to the town manager and the economic development, and, you know, when people thought the trail was dead, it came, came out of the ashes, and it's alive and well. So to the people on the committee, good luck, anything you need, we're up here.
Very good, further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 20. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Ray Arnold to the Recreation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So move.
Second. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It was recommended, this appointment is recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Arnold, he actually knows some of the other people that are applying for both the Trail and the Recreation Committee, apparently there's a tight circle of those folks, actually, Mr., in addition to Mr. Buxton, Mr. Rhines, as well Buxton, Mr. Rhines, as well as Ms. Olet, who are here this evening. Mr. Arnold, from what I can gather, speaking to him and listening to him, is very interested in the recreation here in town, and I endorse his appointment for recreation.
Very good. Discussion. Councilor Steves.
Just a couple of quick comments. Ray's already been involved in doing a lot of trail work, kind of on the side, as much as he can, you know, when one, being one person, and so he's been involved for so long that I think it's a great, great thing to put him here, sort of formally, and also the fact that we're going to be pointing other people to recreation. I think it'll be really beneficial to help Mike when it comes to, for example, like extending the season for Concerts in the Common and various other things, that obviously he's got all on his shoulders right now, but having a bunch of people to help him means we will be able to get more stuff in town that everybody can benefit from. So I think it's a great idea.
Very good. Councilor Adams.
Davis, Chair, through you. Though Ray's doing the recreational committee as well as the rail trail, I want to thank him for his due diligence and his hard work. I know when he first applied for the Rail Southbridge Trail Committee, it took months for him to get involved or to be appointed, so I just want to thank him for constantly doing it even when the Trail Committee has kind of petered off a little bit, now it's on its comeback. I appreciate all of his willingness to serve the community even when times got hard. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 21, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Zachary Dancause to the Recreation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, Mr. Dancause is one of the individuals who I played phone tag with. I had difficulty getting a hold of him, but I know through Mr. Arnold, Mr. Arnold is familiar with Mr. Dancause, recommended him, and we communicated that way. So again, I would recommend him.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 22, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Karen Salidis to the Recreation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 23, vote to confirm the Town Manager's reappointment of Carmen Rivera to the Southbridge Cultural Council for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously, but there was one question about whether or not Ms. Rivera could serve another term. I just, I know from experience that the Cultural Council is term limited by the state government, so I just wanted a verification before we took a vote on it. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
I was unable to get that question answered. My only suggestion would be contingent on whether or not she can serve the second term that you're approved, provided however she's not exceeded her term limits, because I'll still have to double check on that.
I'll take an amendment. Councilor Adams.
Davis, Chair, maybe I missed something. I thought there was an email sent off.
Say that again.
I thought there was an email sent off that she, she was in fact qualified. It was her first term. She's allowed to go for a second, and that means she's qualified.
Very good. I'm getting an okay on that from the executive assistant. Yes, that is correct. Okay.
My apologies, I must have missed the email.
Very good.
I had asked staff, I just didn't have the briefing in my mind, that's why, and I couldn't see the hand, so.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Okay, so it's all set, we're good, we're square. All right. Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 24, vote to approve a transfer request of $5,000 from account number 001910-515100, sick leave vacation buyback to account number 001123-514000, employee benefits to fund the Town Manager's deferred compensation plan contribution.
So moved.
Second. Councilor Steve.
We ended up, we talked about that a little bit, and then ended up kind of postponing doing anything on it.
Okay. Mr. Manager.
So my understanding, there was, I tried to get the information, Ms. Harnoyes was not with me the other night, but apparently there was a question of the open meeting law. What had happened was it was contractual obligation that Ms. Harnoyes felt had to be voted prior, so that the transfer could happen prior to September 1st, based on the wording in the contract, which is why they tried to get it on the GenGov Subcommittee. Notwithstanding the fact that it wasn't addressed the other evening, she still believes that it should, that it needs to be addressed this evening in order to make the timeline for the contract terms.
Very good. Discussion. Councilor Azal, then Councilor Adams.
I'd just like to say I understand the process, and I understood what happened. I am going to be voting yes tonight. We've been trying to get better at getting things to Subcommittee and Subcommittee accepted them properly to have them on the agenda. I want to continue to work to straighten that out. We're not perfect on it. I know that the chairman has brought forward some ideas on, you know, lining up the Subcommittee's earlier in the week, which would give people more time to get the agenda ready. I think we're going to continue to work on it. I do agree that it, you know, it should, you know, should be voted on if Subcommittee didn't come up, but past practice is, if there's deadlines, we usually move it up and to complete it so we don't delay any deadlines. So tonight, again, let's try and do a better job at that. Maybe Karen would realize this a little earlier, this is not going to be something that, if it happens again, we'll just have to deal with it, but I think we got to get better at what we do. Thank you.
Councilor Adams.
Just to be clear, so the day after the General Gov meeting, I went ahead and called Karen up just to see if there was a time crunch on this, and sure enough, there was on September 1st. So at least, you know, I reached out to the General Gov Chair, I reached out to the Chair of the Town Council, said, you know, we, A, don't want to, we signed a contract, we're buying a contract, we're going to make sure that we get it up there, Subcommittee's being a recommendative, recommendation body. I thought it was smart to bring it up to the Town Council right away so we can, we can vote on it and be within that timeframe appropriated by the contract. Thank you.
Councilor Muntigney.
Thank you very much. I did have intentions of trying to postpone this again or voting no, but this memo that we received when we got here today, it's a great start on getting things done in a more processor, process and procedural fashion. So I will support this, definitely don't want to violate any contracts, but in the future, I'm sure we'll continue to get better and better as time goes along. Thanks.
Mr. Manager.
I just wanted to point out, just to clarify, I don't know that there was a delay so much in Ms. Harnoyes getting this information, it's just, my understanding was, there was amendments made to the contract, and they're supposed to make their way eventually to various departments so they can have them on file and get them in the system, and I don't, it's my understanding she didn't have that, and she came looking for it, realizing that it was probably up for the change, so she wound up getting a copy of this close to the deadline. So it wasn't, you know, the fault of anybody putting it on late, it was trying to find the appropriate paperwork and not, you know, we've had some staffing changes, we'll work on it, we'll make it better, but I don't fault Ms. Harnoyes. I think, if anything, I thank her, not just because of me, but because she was doing diligent work trying to find, make sure that all the paperwork got there.
Councilor Azal.
I just want to point a clarification. I am in no way picking on Karen Harnoyes. I mean, I think she's one of our rock stars in the town hall, but I just, we're going to get better at what we're doing. Next year, we'll, we'll have it properly presented and get it done a little earlier. That's all I'm saying. Thanks.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Eight-one, motion passes. Item number 25, vote to approve the proposal for the Senior Exercise Program for fiscal year 23 and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Very good. Any discussion? Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Adriana, our HR Assistant Town Manager, for bringing this forward to us, and thank you for you and the staff. Uh-oh. Pat! Pat! I apologize. I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Haddock, for bringing this forward as appropriate, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Maybe I just had a lot of conversations with Adriana about it. Thank you.
I know. I'm done.
Any other discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 26, vote to ratify the standard contract for the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, SMRP, grant to secure our place on the upcoming Municipal Master Agreement and authorize Department of Environment of Environmental Protection, the DEP, to forward payment to Southbridge if awarded during the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30, 2029, Master Agreement, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Very good. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 27, vote to accept the fiscal year 23 Massachusetts Central Local Insurance Association, MIA, wellness grant in the amount of $12,398.01 for creating and maintaining a workplace that improves employees' well-being and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee, and I believe, Councilor Adams, this is the one Ms. Adriana was working on.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Appreciate it. I thought everybody forgot already.
Any discussion? Councilor Rivas.
I just want to say, I do want to thank Adriana for bringing this forward, and, and it's such an important piece, after being in a pandemic and our staff working through that pandemic, giving them some tools to help their wellness and keep well-qualified and hard-working staff, you know, that's what we want. We want to give them something back for their hard work.
Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 28, vote to ratify the Interim Valuation Service Contract with Bishop &amp; Associates in the amount of $3,500 and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Councilor Steves.
Yeah, we talked about that, we approved unanimously.
Sorry?
Huh? Number 28?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not in front of the mic, sorry. We talked about that at GenGov, we voted unanimously after discussing a bit about the, the discussion between the Bishop Associates' proposal and the current, or the previous proposal that we had had, which had expired, and she was, she was talking about that it's been running along for a little while on a year, basically on a year-to-year contract, and this current proposal will be for one year to give them, to give them some time to do some research and put out bids for another contract for five years.
Very good. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 29, vote to support the idea of a dog park in Southbridge.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This actually, so this came up on the Education and Human Services Subcommittee last week. Initially, Mr. Brunel came forward to propose an ad hoc committee. After much discussion and a lot of interest from many councilors and many citizens, it was determined that maybe the best course of action would be to get the town's approval for the idea of a park, but not to let the private sector more handle the fundraising and organization of the park itself, which is what led to the agenda today of approval of the Council considering and supporting the idea of a dog park here in the community.
Very good. Mr. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It's a good idea to have a park for the dog, but my concern is, I know a lot of people excited, it's going to be volunteers, but in the future, if all these volunteer back off, who's going to be responsible for that park? The town? I believe we can't keep up with fixing the kids' park right now. We have a problem to keep maintaining what we have for what the kid play in those parks and keep it maintained and keep him all in good standing, safety for the, for the, for the kids. And now we're going to add a park for the dog, and we don't know who is going to be responsible if nobody volunteer, if we don't have enough money to raise. I mean, we throw everything on the DPW employee, and we're short on these guys either. I mean, before we make any decision, I think it should be more steady and more concerned before we approve that. Thank you.
Councilor Azal first.
Okay. Councilor Dow brings out a valid point. Dog parks, I know there was a John Doof frame not too long ago outside of the town, wanted the town to kind of partner in and help out, but not really run it. I think it, depending on the concept of how it's presented, the reason why I'm voting for this is to spur the discussion, to find out those answers that Joe Dow has brought out. Can the town, you know, pay to maintain a dog park, or should it be a private entity outside of the town element? Can we help them with a donation of land? There are so many questions. The one thing you want to do is, is vote yes tonight to find the answers. We're not voting to build it, we're just, you know, entertaining the option of the idea, and I think we at least have to give it a look. I think with the dogs in town, there are a lot of dog lovers that would love to get involved in something like this, and they always ask, why don't we have a dog park? So I think invite them in to the discussion, move forward with it, at least to some meetings, public hearings, to see what's, what would it look like, how would it run, who's going to run it, and put all those puzzle pieces together, and maybe we can get something in Southbridge. But I, I think the concept is good, but I have the same questions as Councilor Dow. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Brunel, I see you in the audience. Would you like to address the Council?
Thank you. So essentially, as you guys have alluded to, yes, it is a lot to kind of answer and figure out at this time. I think this vote would probably be the first step to do that. I kind of just want to differentiate what the vote was for the Subcommittee. So the ad hoc would basically be more of the town being involved in getting to the bottom of who would maintain and sit, and what the rules were, where it was going to be located and all that. So the vote tonight would be not for an ad hoc, but to allow citizens to explore that idea, very similar to towns around us that have decided to adopt a dog park, similar to Auburn or Oxford. They have ideas basically surrounding friends or fur friends of Auburn, of Oxford, and it's a private entity where they raise the money. I'm assuming we'd be going through the Stanton Foundation. That's the grant writer, or the people that offer the grant, that have basically given the ones all around here. They cover, I think, 100% intended for the design of the park and then 90% of the building costs. So the private entity would have to cough up the 10%, and they do need for the grant to work with the Stanton Foundation to have one representative from the town. Peg from Economic Development, Eric, our town planner, and myself have all volunteered to possibly be that. We don't mind helping them get that across the line, but I think having that separation and doing it closer to what the other surrounding towns have done does seem like the best route. So I would support it tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Rivas.
I think those are all really good questions that the other councilors have come up with, but we owe it to our residents, especially the people who are, I mean, I hear this all the time. We hear it on social media. People want us to explore this, and I think it's important. You can't get answers if you don't take the first step, and so I do think that, you know, Mike has a great idea, and I think that, you know, we'll see what those answers to those questions are.
If I could just butt in again, thank you. But exactly what Counsel Rivas just said. It is probably one of the first things I heard getting hired, and it's also probably one of the highest debated things I've heard, very polarizing opinions on it. But I think just at that minimum, it should be just explored at a minimum. Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
Actually, everybody pretty much said what I was going to say. I just think that the idea of all of the other towns that we have seen in our area who have done these is more than enough dogs to certainly serve in our community. Just, I wonder if we could have a cat park too? Although getting them to do anything would be a problem.
Yeah, give them to the dogs. Bring them to the dog park.
Counsel Montigny, then Counsel Dau.
Thank you. I think it's a good idea, and I'll definitely be supporting it. You know, in theory, you build the dog park and families will come. Certainly, they will be frequenting Southbridge. They can see what else we have to offer. You're not going to be able to bring your dog to Fins and Tails after you go to the park, but maybe they'll come back the next day with the rest of the kids and everything. So we need families to be back in Southbridge, so dog park sounds good to me. Thanks.
Counsel Dau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nobody says that it's a bad idea, but the way I see it, it's going to be end up on a town responsibility, liability. If any dog attack a dog, if any dog attack a person walking another dog inside, small dog bitten, or a big dog bitten a small dog, who's going to pick up the poop? Who's going to provide the bags? Who's going to provide the cleaning? Who's going to provide the maintenance? I mean, a lot of people excited at the beginning, but when they come to real work, I think a lot will walk away too. So this is my opinion, and I'm going to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I will say, I've seen other towns have this and the same issues that Counsel Dau is bringing up. I will say, allow, I would recommend or request that allow Mike and those residents who would like to participate in this endeavor, come up with a good plan, brief the plan appropriately. This shouldn't be something done overnight, and, you know, take their time. I've offered to help out, especially since it's a public, it'll probably be on a public land. Our recreation director will be part of it, and you got residents, a private, non-for-profit entity as well. So look forward to seeing, I'll be recommending tonight, or I'll be voting yes, but looking forward to seeing what you guys come up with in the near future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Who's going to maintain the park is, that's a good question, but no matter what park you have, somebody has to maintain it, whether it's a dog park or any other kind of park, somebody's going to be maintaining it. So it's a good idea. I've heard from other people that say they take their dogs to these parks. There's really not much fighting. They're pretty well behaved, and I just think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, motion passes. Item number thirty. Vote to approve the fiscal year 2023 goals and objectives for the town manager.
So moved.
Second. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with collaboration with the town manager, working over a few things, we came up with some goals and objectives this year, not the evaluation, the evaluation system itself, but the goals and objectives. Wanted to kick this off early in the fiscal year so the town manager could start working on or continue working on some of these ideas that we came up with. The town chair, town council chair, requested that any recommendations be sent to me via email. I received those recommendations, some of those things. I went over every single one with the town manager and worked on them together. So the first one on goals and objectives is, number one, personnel. Goal: Enhance employee productivity through teamwork and employee accountability, job performance. Objective: Create and implement a performance evaluation system for department heads. Two, I'm sorry, the second one would be create an onboarding program for new employees. Number two, communication. Goal: Enhance community engagement to and from the public and private sector. Objective: Develop a broad community engagement plan to enhance public and private entities and develop a town hall connection to social services. Three, infrastructure asset management. Goal: Review of pending projects regarding infrastructure and facilities. Objective: Strategic plan of action for implementation of alternatives to the current curbside collection program to be implemented in March of 2024, and continue to address and provide recommendations to the town council from Southbridge Town Facility Study, June of 2016, School Facility Study, May of 2019, and Building and Grounds Management Study, January of 2018. This, the view itself, or the evaluation itself, will probably be the same one as we did the last couple of years, and the, obviously, the evaluation goals and objectives, the actual evaluation system, the points and all that kind of stuff, will be, will probably come at a later date, probably after the new calendar year. I'll open for any questions.
Counsel Ryan.
No questions, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Vice Chair Adams for his work on this and helping organize this and working with all the individual councilors to get our input and our suggestions. So thank you for helping lead this up.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. Thanks again to Counsel Adams. I would have liked to see something about the schools here, but I know this is more of a formality in that the town manager helps us with everything we're doing anyway, so thanks very much, but schools, taking them back is a big thing to me and a lot of the voters out there, so we're just going to keep that in the back of our mind, please. Thanks.
Counsel Adams, then Counsel Lazo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Counsel Montigny, absolutely, that was one of Counsel Montigny's, take back our schools, and I appreciate that. I know there's EHS, the school board itself, the receiver, the town manager, and many other entities trying to get our schools back into the good graces of the state to bring it hopefully around very, very soon. So we are then responsible for it. I thought at that point in time, when this request came through, I do know the town manager has a weekly conversation with the receiver, and in some cases, with the state itself, to work on those goals, hopefully for the near future, to update the receiver to the town manager on where we're at at that point in time, and then obviously provide suggestions and recommendations to the receiver. So I do know he's working on it, and trust me, I truly believe that is not in back of anybody's mind, but I completely agree with you. We'd like to see our schools taken back.
Counsel Lazo.
I don't think we should keep it in the back of our mind, Counsel Montigny, that it should be in the forefront. I know my good friend Jack Jovan was working with the receiver for four or five years on conversations on a weekly basis. With no bearing any fruit, you lose faith. I know we have trash pickup coming up. I know we have the charter revisions. We have the rule of regulations. We have a lot of moving parts of what we're going to be doing this year. My priority is a little different. Take back the schools always is number one, along with the drugs on the streets of Southbridge. I know that we're very concerned, we hire firefighters. We have a problem that is, you know, out of control, I think, and now all of a sudden the homeless population is growing. I don't know if anybody else sees what's happening on the streets of Southbridge, but to me, that is the priority to make. It's about our people and our streets, our neighborhoods. So moving forward, I know we're going to work on all these issues and when we move forward on it, some of us are more diplomatic than others, but I think we're all on the same page as far as what has to happen. Moving forward, we'll work together on it. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Rivas.
I do think, I mean, I agree with the priorities that all the councilors spoke of before me. I do think these goals and objectives will get us there, specifically to Counsel Lazo's point, the development of a town hall connection to social services, that is the key to helping that drug problem and the substance abuse problem in our community, as well as the ARPA money that we set aside earlier in, you know, in the month, you know, for the Substance Abuse Task Force. Those are definite initiatives through the town manager and these goals and objectives that are going to make a dent in those specific issues in our community.
Anyone else? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everybody for their input. You know, these are overarching goals that I think we can all work on and agree that are important for the community. I think they are attainable. We're doing our best to work on a lot of these at the moment. One of the keys to getting these completed is going to be ensuring that we get ourselves up to full strength in terms of staffing. We were down a couple of department heads, as I mentioned earlier. We have a few people down, and a lot of these will rely on some key staff. Number one is going to rely on our H.R., and we only half-staffed, but pretty soon we'll have that up and running. With that many open positions, a lot of staff, including myself and Ms. Harnoy, who's been working with Ms. Robaina, attending a lot of the interviews. We've been spending a lot of time, you know, between 25 and 50% of our week, vetting candidates, reviewing resumes for those almost dozen and a half positions. We do have an IT person coming on, and we've had a lot of thoughts, senior staff, about working on communications. I've already touched upon what Counsel Rivas has talked about, getting the social service connections. We've worked on that in my last community. And of course, infrastructure and asset management. We talked about creating the ad hoc committee the other week to help work with some of these and identify goals about capital needs as well as our facilities needs. So I'm excited to work with a lot of these different stakeholders and get going on these. And we have other things, as we've all mentioned, that are ongoing at all times, schools. We have other, I mentioned contracts all the time, energy, IMAs, unions and things, but I think these, we can continue to work on these as we work on the day-to-day operations, and hopefully we'll continue to fill our ranks with good people that will help us achieve these even quicker. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you, Vice Chair Adams. Item number thirty-one, councils forum. Counsel Dau.
I want to thank all the residents came forward and volunteered. You know, that's awesome to see people living in town, they want to get involved, and thank you.
Counsel Steves.
Just a couple of quick announcements. One is that the Italian picnic is this Sunday, the 28th, if anybody's interested in a good Italian food. Also, we've got, let's see here, the literacy volunteers are honoring some of their students and some of their tutors on Thursday, the 1st of September at the Arts Center at 6:00. Of course, that's going, of course, I think that conflicts with something we have to do, but it always seems to be that way. But if you can go, go. And that's all I have at the moment.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rivas.
So I also want to thank all of the people that volunteered, and it's great to see so many people being sworn in today and, you know, being voted into committees and boards. You know, that's what we want, stepping up to the plate and serving our community. I also want to mention, just in the last week, one of our own residents, Carla de la Cruz, was awarded the Worcester Business Journal's 40, over/under 40, for her work in our community with the Bridge Fringe. It is an amazing honor to have someone make that, you know, that coveted list, and, you know, really proud to work alongside her through the Community Connections Group, but I just wanted to give her a shout out because that's a great honor in representing our community in that way. I also want to let everyone know, Southbridge Community Connections and our Recreation Department are collaborating on a health fair that will be at Henry Street on September 15th from 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. We're trying to get some, you know, some visibility in that area of town, and we want to bring services to all of our community. So please, if you're around, come in, see us. There will be prizes. There'll be a lot of community agencies there, so if you can join us, come down. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm very excited about all the volunteer work, that all the volunteers that came forward tonight, and how everybody maneuvered around to get positions, and everybody's in positions where they probably would better serve Southbridge. But the volunteerism in Southbridge is not dead. It's alive and well, and I think I'm real proud of about that, especially when we went to the Education Human Services Subcommittee and all the positions that we filled, including, you know, the Board of Health and stuff. It was really, really exciting for somebody that I sit back and no appointments, no appointments, and then all of a sudden, there's a barrage of appointments. So it's all good. I would just like to throw a compliment out to the Police Department, especially a gentleman, Sergeant Ginkos and Officer Miranda. We just appointed him sergeant not too long ago, and he's already in high gear. I own businesses and buildings, and we had a person smash the windows out of my building, and within three minutes of the building being vandalized, the lady is in court, and she was arraigned this morning, and neither court was calling me. The line of communication from the time a problem happens with the Southbridge Police Department, I was totally impressed. We have a homeless problem down around the Polish Club. I own a piece of property over there that I run my construction business out of. It's amazing. When they're walking out, breaking into your place, walking away with your tools, you could still go pick them up at the Police Department because they got them. And that is, we, how do I say? We have people that maybe are doing all these wrongs, but it's nice to know that we're protected and that your tools come back, your windows get repaired, and the people that do these things get caught. And that, just to the Police Department, Woodson, but especially Ginkos and Miranda, outstanding job. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. Last week at my house, there was an incident with a private contractor. They had to call the fire department, and I just wanted to say thank you. It turned into quite the event, but I know I'm missing a couple of towns here, but thank you so much to Southbridge, Thirbridge, Charlton, Oxford, Webster, Lester, Millbury, Sutton, Oxbridge, there's a couple more. So thanks for that response. Secondly, I went to the Greek picnic yesterday. It was a great time. It's always fun going there and meeting new people. It was nice to meet Nancy yesterday. Thank you for your kind words. And everybody, the Italian club picnic is next week on Sunday, just to keep that in your mind. And then the employee luncheon was Thursday, and it was awesome to see everybody there, even actually the fire got a call in the middle of it, and they just ran bolted out of their seats. I mean, that's what they do. But it was, it was great to be able to enjoy a burger with everybody, and I thanked the town manager for putting that together. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have to say tonight is, I watched the school committee meeting last week, and I heard the chair say various people were asking the school committee to end members' forum. Chair even suggested that members only talk about positive things, and I saw that Counsel Adams even got up and talked about open meeting laws and members being careful on what they say for fear of litigation. And I mean no disrespect, Counsel Adams, but in the United States of America, we live in a democracy. Free speech is a fundamental right of citizens guaranteed by the First Amendment. What committee members say at members' forum, what councilors say at councilors' forum, and even what citizens say at citizens' forum, is not a violation of the open meeting law. We're not voting on anything. We're just exercising our right to speak. As far as councilors and committee members being careful about what we say for fear of litigation... of litigation, I've yet to see a case where an elected official was litigated and successfully sued for speaking out at a public meeting. I will point out, when the state took over the school district, they wrote a scathing report of the lack of communication between the school committee and the town council. So now what? We're going to stop communicating with each other? So to any school committee members, if you're watching tonight, and to the school committee member in the audience, be polite, speak your mind, talk about issues, not personalities. If someone thinks you're being negative, well, that's their problem, but never let anyone take away your right to free speech. And Counsel Ryan, I look forward to your EHS Subcommittee meeting where we'll be able to talk to the school committee members. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since Counsel Marketti brought that up, I'm sure, I must have missed that meeting because I think I did state that the Select Board should be able to speak freely when they're up there. I even brought up examples of what if you first and second it, and you have a discussion? You can find yourself in a Hurt Locker there, but you have a right to speak. So I did recommend to the school board not to follow suit, and that they should be able to speak. I made that very, very clear. So next, 29th of August, we have a council of the whole meeting, which is on curbside collection. So for those residents who would like to attend, by all means, we'll be right here in the diocese at 7:00 PM. I also want to thank the town manager, HR Director, and all the staff members that put on that picnic on last week. It was well-attended, and we really appreciate it. And I do want to thank town or the chair for putting out that memo to the subcommittees. I hope that the subcommittees will follow suit and not do last-minute meetings, especially when they don't, they could have waited at least two weeks for it. And last but not least, I want to, since our next meeting is not until the 12th of September, I also want to remember 9/11. Almost 3,000 people died that day and perished this earth, and so I want to say, may they rest in peace. May those soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen that passed away, and civilians thereafter, rest in peace. And please, set aside some time on 9/11, preferably during that period of time in which the towers were hit. Set aside some time for, you know, reflection. Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Item number 32, vote to enter into executive session. A, pursuant to Mass General Act Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining regarding all collective bargaining units, which if discussed in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body.
Still moved.
Second.
And B, pursuant to Mass General Act Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to the drainage at 339 and 353 Dresser Hill Road, and Provost Litigation Update, which discussed in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about executive session tonight. If I might be able to speak to it.
Certainly.
All right. I'd like to know what the drainage at 339 and 353 Dresser Hill Road, why is that an executive session, meeting, discussion? Looking at the state's open meeting law, contract negotiations, yes, executive session, litigation strategy, yes, but I don't see any litigation with regard to Dresser Hill Road. I've talked to residents up there. No one has filed a lawsuit against the town. According to the state's open meeting law, that a person is represented by council and supports a position adverse to the public body does not itself mean that litigation is eminently threatened or likely. Even if someone threatens to sue us, it does not necessarily mean eminent litigation. So I would just like to know why we are talking about that at an executive session and not in an open meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
I'm happy to take it off. I have a demand letter saying that, from an attorney that represents the residents up there, that was demanding that we do certain things to make it right, that is usually the precursor to litigation. Although people have represented, they no longer have counsel. I wrote to that attorney, because he communicated me via email. I have no confirmation otherwise. You know, I've talked to the DPW about it. I was approached with a variety of things before, which I've handed over to our insurance and our insurance council about it. So, you know, if you want me to get a ruling and get an exact letter from that attorney saying that he has no intention of moving forward, or that he no longer represents them, that's fine. I'm just erring on the side of caution. I get a letter from an attorney demanding action on behalf of the town. If I don't take that action, usually the next step is somebody sues me. So I'm not about to start talking about something if I don't know where I'm grounded. Now, I wrote him last week when some of the residents contacted me. I've yet to hear from him. So I was just going to give you a brief update as to where we are, and that's that. If you want to postpone this to the 9th or the 12th, I'm sure you can wait. If I get a letter, I'll just do it in the manager's announcements.
Well, if I could continue. I have asked to put this on DPW, and every time I put it on DPW, we're not allowed to talk about it. So it's one or the other. We're either going to talk about it in the open, or we're going to talk about it in executive session. I don't see any litigation going on here. I would like it resolved. So, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Manager.
If I may, I got a demand letter six months ago on the other matter, and it waited six months before the lawsuit came. So if I sat out an open session and talked about what I was doing in that particular case, I would have given away my legal strategy. So there are rules about suing municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You have to make demands, and then you have to wait so long to see if your demand has been answered. And if you don't, it's called a presentment letter. They usually cite the statute. That wasn't there, but you have to take some things on its face. The time runs out, and the town doesn't respond to your request for, or your demand, then they can go forward and file a case against you. So again, erring on the side of caution. If you want me to get something that says they no longer represent, if they're not proceeding, I'm happy to do that. I'm not trying to be argumentative, Counsel Marketti. I just don't want to get into a situation where we start talking about something, and then they file a case, and now I've talked about a lot of things that I probably wouldn't want otherwise disclosed at the time. And I can get, I'll write to insurance council about it as well and see what they, if they feel that there's any upside or downside to this. We don't have to talk about it. It's not a whole lot to say at the moment. Just going to give you an update.
Very good. Well, we have a motion and second on the first part. Do we wish to amend the second part or not go with the second part? No? Counselor Adams.
Mr. Chair, item number 32 has A and B in it.
Yep.
So at that point in time, if we want to amend it, somebody made a motion in second after Alpha, so nobody even talked about Bravo. So at this point in time, I think we have to go all the way through, first and second, have the discussion. If there's no discussion at that point in time, make an amendment on B to remove it, and then we go from there.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
If we vote it and we go into executive session and we discuss it, is there any illegal illegality? I don't see any.
Which party are you talking about?
About Dresser Hill.
If we vote?
Then what would be the problem of discussing it? I say vote the whole thing through.
As I understood it, if I may, I thought Counsel Marketti wanted to know why we can't just talk it out here. And I, as I said, I'm erring on the side of caution. If we want to wait, get a ruling, I'll happen to talk it out, the next council meeting right out in the manager's announcement. I think that's the question, is whether it's protected or not at this point.
Counsel Montigny.
I think we should just go into executive session. The way it's written, that's just my opinion. But thanks for the explanation. It's very informative.
Anyone else? Very good. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Very good. We're going into executive session. Council will adjourn from executive session and will not return to open session.